Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Quincy City Council Monday, March 21st to order. Mr. Clark will call.
Counselor Kane, present. Counselor Crowell, present. Counselor Devona, present. Counselor Finn, present. Counselor Hart, present. Counselor Yang, present. President Hughes.
Present.
Should have members of the.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. You'll all stand to join me in a moment of silence for the men and women serving this country here and abroad. Thank you. And I would like to invite our Girl Scouts up who are here this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Forrest, would you like to?
Great. So we have Cassie Gordon rather than Hannah Davis.
Cassie Gordon and Hannah Davis. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, we'll read the open meeting law.
This is Mass General law, Chapter 30, Section 20E. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions of being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, are deemed and acknowledged impermissibly. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Honoring, yes, Counselor Forrest, check. Honoring the Girl Scouts tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. It's great to have so many Girl Scouts in the audience tonight. A lot of the awards that we're going to be noticing tonight are the equivalent of Life Scout and Eagle Scout, being forced out. Many of you not familiar with the Bronze and Silver Girl Scout Awards. Let's get as much of the notoriety. We do like to give an opportunity to bring the girls before us to give us another confession. There's been multiple troops throughout the city. So I'm just going to call them up by their project. So from troop 75054, Catherine Belafado, Haley Ross, and Jerral San Jose. Girls, pick them up when I call yours again. One of these girls did the Wallace and Beach cleanup project. They created an anti-literature video and organized a beach cleanup last fall. So I want to give them their commendation. Now, Katie Gilspring, our Girl Scout coordinator, please come forward. Do you have something you'd like to say for the audience? Sure. I can be a representative here.
My group and I decided to do a beach cleanup project for our project. We were there to educate people to clean the beach clean and posters hung up on the beach with code that people could stand there for, instead of no one would be able to. To start off our project, we visited Wallace and Beach a few times to recognize what needed to be done, mostly around where the restaurants were, because there were food containers and there were cigarette butts everywhere, creating a fire hazard and pollution for a lot of that. The day of the beach cleanup, we had girls and parents of my troop, other committee troops, and three cities show up to help. And women from DCR was there to help us, to help show us the best places and with the renewal of the vacuum that we collected. We had a lot of fun this Friday and we hope that they do a follow-up, so we'll keep you looking, just.
What's your name? Kayla. So congratulations to Kayla, Catherine, and Jerral. We appreciate you. We'll do a picture at the end with everybody. Our next project is the Goldfish Project. On my troop 75054, we have Nora Conan, Mariah Curran, Kate Murray, and Ava Hunt. In this group, we did a letter-writing campaign to PS to carnivals and a video to raise awareness of the treatment of goldfish and how to properly care for them. I will say my daughter might have the world record on keeping a baby fish alive from that. I really think that's a great project for us, giving away this carnival, we care for us, John Wilson. We have cameras for our certificates.
We need to each have their, hold it louder. Step right up.
May I please introduce yourself? I'm Mariah Curran. We love animals. We reached out to several animal shelters and pet groups that started this project. Petco was the first to share their very concern for a small but common pet, the goldfish. We ran with it. Nora, Ava, Kate, and I researched goldfish care and created a video. While working together, we talked about the goldfish given out at prizes at two local Quincy carnivals. We discovered that most of the fish die within 24 hours. This gave ways to creating a letter, asking the carnivals to stop giving the fishes out those prizes. We also asked them to consider giving out a pan of food some fish to eat later. They still have dogs' mouths. It was awesome researching and educating and making a difference for the little, small, and medium pets.
Wow. And the business we're in responds as most importantly to the video, so we're in to your team. Thank you very much for your service. From troop 85042, we have Gail and Misses Gore projects. We have Angela Jewell, Ashley Little, Dorothy Brown, Isabella Carnici, Mia Cahill, and Sabrina Beckett. Do we have a speaker for this project as well? Okay, great. Sabrina, off the top.
Hello. My name is Mia Cahill, and we did geocaching. We taught people, the people who came, why, why, why it's important to clean up the outdoors and different things that can be harmful for the outdoors. We hid things in woods and they'd chase us. So we give them kids, we can find them and teach them what not to do and what is okay. We did some team building things and.
So for that little education for the at-home, we are geocaching, it's like outdoor scanning and hunt, right? So where was your favorite geocaching location in Quincy? I took a lot of the questions in the Handbox Cemetery with my kids.
We put one in the Thomas Crane Library.
Okay, Thomas Crane Library for all the geocachers out there. I'll check it out.
Thanks, girls, for your service.
Next project, from troop 85042, it's for the Love for Dove project. And Dove, if Quincy domestic violence ended, is the acronym. We invite to whiteboard Angel Price Mahan, Anna Cahill, Rihanna Backman, and Veronica Phillips. Your speaker on this one? Step right up.
Hi, my name is, for our project, we built that, we arted and crafts for Dove, Dove's domestic violence shelter for camp, for people who have babies, radical ones, or family. So we gave the, we built thirty guys and gave them to Dove because their art room had cluttered, so we felt like that was a good part to give the kids to do when they were having a hard time.
We appreciate that. I know one of our council colleagues, Councilor DeSoto, is on the Dove board, so thank you so much for your service for us. Okay, our next project's from the same troop, actually two different troops for Dove. It's Sasha Rockwell, 85042, and Tess Busan, 85391. It's the Animal, Tainment Project. They are unable to attend, and what their project description is designed in light games at children's birthday parties held at Wild Pet Vet, and comes from the parties and in the care of the private animals. Great facility over at the Pet Vet. Okay. Big thank you for those girls for their service. So we also have my positions, 85387, Margaret Fay, and Javier Estacio for Darley Quincy's Garden Project. They planted daffels, trees, and shrubs, watered them, painted benches, and a table for the summer lunch at the Darley Quincy House. So great job, girls. I'd like to. Next project from troop 75387 is Cassie Gordon. Cassie, if you could tell us about Kate's props.
Well, my name's, hi, I'm Cassie Gordon, and from my project, I, me and my sister school, we need a community garden that we have the whole discipline of the 330 pounds from to donate for local group activity to the IRS. We, we also, so together we make these whole spirit and, and then all the, the, some vegetables for the people who were hungry, but they couldn't have any food, like cucumber tomatoes at all.
So, okay, some services is an organization a lot of us are very familiar with, and the housing farm, H L Chargers, is home to Kate's props. And I just want to say thank you so much, because a lot of the food cantry is often food trucks and canned food trucks, looking at fresh coders. So referring to the promise of fresh coders in the summer, that's really great. Great job, Cassie. I am so proud to be to see how much service you're doing in this community, so thank you so much for being here tonight. Those were our Bronze Award recipients. Now we have our Silver Award recipient, one of those who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, how appropriate, from troop number 75387, for her patriotism in our community project. If I could have Hannah Davis go forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Davis, and the purpose of my project was to help others find a proper way of handling the United States flag and how to do a proper flag ceremony, so that the United States flag has the proper respect that it deserves.
So if we could just have the girls come forward as a group photo?
Yes. Great, thank you.
If everybody wants to come forward, we'll do a quick photo. All right, we'll see a brief recess.
Welcome, welcome. We want to say hello. Nice job. Nice job. Who was on the Dove project team? So Brian's on the board of directors of the Dove.
Great organization. There it goes. Chaw, chow, bass, right? The chaw, chow, bass. Where's our Veronica? What? Miss Club, no, we didn't hear you. See, the windows. There's what I want to see is.
Wait a minute. Can I, I'm like, I'm a chow over my.
What's that? Can they just like push, just a tiny bit? Yeah. Yak up a little bit. And then Veronica, do you want to sit in front? Thank you. Yeah? There we go. And.
You did. Mine. And, my fellow.
This is quite the representation.
Everybody say tango.
Oh, yeah. No cookie sales. Usually there's someone who shows up.
We just finished sales.
Samois. Cassie Gordon. Karen from the lights.
Yes.
You all set? Quincy Sun went next. That's okay, no, no, no. So come to, what do they call?
Feeding the.
Does that sound off? Is that one checked right now? All right. Girl Scouts. Three weeks, three weeks. Nina, what's name? Girl Scouts? No. Oh. It's gonna be the most paparazzi we've had.
Okay, good job. Oh, hold on. Oh, Scott. Copy looking down. There we go. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you.
She's so cute. Mike White.
All right, take care. Okay, yeah, yeah, let me give you my card. This is our new.
Yes.
I don't care about the first three things we have to do. Let me grab it from the desk.
He said, I'm going.
I'm good.
All right. Yes, very well. Clark, first item on the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda, Madam President. On request, the Community Preservation Committee, with the recommendations on may have a sum of $132,530, five hundred thirty-two dollars, for appropriate development purposes. One, recreation dollars. Various monies distributed and voted on by the community preservation may have been dealing, dealing.
I agree. All right, very well. Recognize Counselor Devona.
Thank you, Madam President. I am actually honored to be the new CPC representative, following in the footsteps of former Board Three City Council, Devin Cofflin. And before Counselor Cofflin, longtime former Board Two City Council, current DDW Commissioner of the Land of Martin. So I feel very honored to come into this role. Just a little history about the Community Preservation Act, CPA. It's a fund designed to help cities and towns preserve the character of their community. These funds can be used for open space, historic preservation, affordable housing, and recreation. You know, elementary schools like Atherton, Howe, Swan, and Montclair have taken advantage of these funds to build new playgrounds over the last few years, and the Parker School Playground is in the pipeline right now. Other historical preservation and restoration projects are also being used for churches and museums across the city. I know some of my fellow councils will be excited to hear of thirty-two unit affordable housing project in the pipeline. Also, I'd like to recognize in the audience right now Quincy Youth Baseball President, Vice President, Mike Connet, and Dave Murphy. We actually just, you know, the lights over at Quarry Hills are going to be installed for footballing council right now. If I could, do you guys have anything, absolutely, you guys have anything to say at all? You guys want to come forward? Thank you, Madam President.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I will say is, you know, in ten-plus years, I've been lucky enough to be able to volunteer, be involved on Quincy baseball. We've seen a growing cooperation with the city, Parks Department. It's led to a different, I think, different level of relationship. I'm very, very proud to say that we've kind of come to the point where it's almost a partnership, and that's kind of what happened with this project. We came to the city with a proposal to do something, and the mayor said, you know, let's see if we can work partnership, and, you know, we'll do some, we'll do some. You know, the city was very forthcoming, we investigated it, and the CPC was very welcoming, and helped us out with the project. And we're just very thankful to have that type of relationship with the city. Parks have never looked better. It's, you know, I'm testing to you folks, and also to the mayor, to Mr. Cassani, who's here, the Parks Department, and the work that those folks are doing. You know, we get several towns come in in the summer from out of town, and they say, wow, what a great facility, Leonard Adams, Coletta, Bishop, you know, our softball field, Mitchell, McCoy Page, and Quarry Hills, obviously, is our Jennifer Kids Under Twelve. There's really no better place for baseball in the summer, where us, there was tournaments all the time. Lights are just another opportunity for us to bring some of that activity into the town, you know, from out of town. And, you know, it brings positive activity up to the area at night. I know, you know, your, that's your neighbor, the Woods Council, Palmoche. You know, just from a guy who can, who, you know, who loves to stock a snack bar at ten o'clock at night, it can be almost scary at that. So, you know, a little late at night, it's a bit. Try Doc. So, you know, we're just really looking forward to it. We think it'll be, you know, you know, I played Quincy baseball twenty-five years ago, and we've never had a new building ever in nineteen. So I think it's pretty exciting. Dave has been a great help to us as far as, you know, helping us through the, you know, the physical ins and outs and that. And again, we're very thankful.
I think we've got it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your dedication to the city.
I'd also like to recognize Chris Assari of the Parks Department. Chris, do you have anything at all you want to say? Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Mr. Assari.
Thank you very much. I can't express my gratitude to the community for all of the city council's support of us, and obviously that stems from the mayor's commitment to the parks system. We have another great group of projects this year, continuing our attempt to try to spread the love across the whole city. You know, each year we try to pick out projects that don't just focus on one neighborhood. You know, over the last few years, we've really been able to make a difference in every corner of the city. This year, we have a major project, obviously, we've seen before, obviously, the Parker Project, I think, one-sixth is a tremendous project, and we're going to close you with that as well. But they may be some investments in very much, again, that are desperately needed. So I thank the committee for the support, and thank you, I guess, for yours.
Agent Gray.
I'd also like to, Madam President, if I could, is, you know, the city of Quincy, if you go onto the website, and you're looking to do other projects around the city under four criterias, you know, open space, historical preservation, affordable housing, or recreation, you meet under those four criteria, projects that you want to do. Any associations, organizations, PTO groups, activists out there that want to do these projects, you can go onto the city of Quincy website, and there's a link on there for community preservation, and it'll pop up the application on there. So just, words, anybody that's listening out there, that anybody can do this. Also, before I put in a form of emotion, I'd like to thank the CPC, the committee, for their hard work. Lisa Mendola is the director, as well as Coleman Barry is the chairman. Do a lot of hard work behind the scenes, and they're very, they take great pride in being part of that committee, so I want to give thanks to the entire group. If I could, I could put into a form of emotion to appropriate $1,202,534 CPC to community preservation, historic, and recreation projects.
All right. This motion, seconded by Counselor Crowell. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Counselor Palmoche.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you, Counselor Devona, for your, your words of introduction on this measure. I will say that I heard that when Counselor Cofflin was our appointee to the CPC, the representative, he used to bring cookies and treats. You haven't brought any cookies or treats to that committee, so I told the folks there that I passed that law. But through you, Madam President, to the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker, do we, is bonding, have we done paying down the bond from the open space purchases, like the Jones parcel, I know we bought some other property? Are we done with that, or is that a different expenditure that we'll be in the annual appropriation?
Through you, Madam President, I can get an answer for it. I believe we are, if not all the way home with that first round of original land purchases in the open space category. I believe we're just about there. We'll find them from number four tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, this is a question I always ask Counselor Cofflin, but I think it is important, and again, thank you, Counselor Devona, for your role playing this. But what we have before us here really represents the findings of that commission, correct? The various recommendations.
The entire way of the reading is right here in front of us. If you have any questions upon that, great. One, two, three, and four. And the only other thing is that I tend to really feel very strongly, even that, hands of the commission, but I wanted to point out that how, you know, my role since the passing of Counselor McNeely, which is how delighted I believe Counselor McNeely would be to see the Parker School, and I know it's probably something that he, as a board council is advocating strongly for, so let's do it. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Very well seen, and it's quite the couple.
Counselor Kane. Yes. Counselor Crowell. Yes. Counselor Devona. Yes. Counselor Hart. Yes. Counselor Yang. Yes. Counselor Palmoche. Yes. President Hughes. Yes.
Thank you. Item two, Mr. Clark.
Item two, Madam President, is a modification to the 2016 regular city council meeting agenda of last week. The council president, myself, and Mrs. Crispoe had a discussion relative to the next several council meetings over April and May, and although we have a, although we have a rule of the city council that we don't meet the night before elections, we had some conversations with the mayor, and his intention was to bring the budget in on the first meeting in May. We had changed in January, due to the special election, one-sixth, the May meeting to May nine. After we had a discussion last Wednesday, we'd like to propose to change it back to May 2nd, and we feel we can handle that and the final election, one-sixth. And in, in concert with that, we'd like to change the first meeting in April from the 11th debate to back to the 4th for the same reason and the heat to calendar. But the main, the main thrust of this was for the May 2nd meeting, Madam, because the mayor's promise, the pledge will be presented for council on May 2nd, in order to give the council four forty-five days, the May 9th date, put us into a little, a little bit of a time constraint. So the purpose of this part is just to amend the schedule for the rest of the year. You'll notice the 2nd meeting in April is late because we're going to observe and change and observe the school vacation, we cannot meet the week. housing project in the pipeline. Also, I'd like to recognize in the audience right now Quincy Youth Baseball President, Vice President Mike Connet and Dave Murphy. We actually just, you know, the lights over at Quarry Hills are going to be installed at the football council right now. If I could, do you guys have anything to say at all? Do you guys want to come forward? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. What I will say is, you know, in ten-plus years that I've been lucky enough to be able to volunteer and be involved on Quincy baseball, we've seen a growing cooperation with the city parks department. It's led to a different, I think, a different level of relationship. I'm very, very proud to say that we've kind of come to the point where it's almost a partnership, and that's kind of what happened with this project. We came to the city with a proposal to do something, and the mayor said, you know, let's see if we can work partnership, you know, a little something, you know. The city was very forthcoming, investigated it, and the CPC was very welcoming, and helped us out with the project. And we're just very thankful to have that type of relationship with the city. Parks have never looked better. It's, you know, I attest to you folks and also to the mayor, to Mr. Cassani who's here in the Parks Department, the work that those folks are doing. You know, we get several towns come in in the summer from out of town, and they say, wow, great facility, Leonard Adams, Coletta, Bishop, you know, our softball field, Mitchell, McCoy, Page, Quarry Hills, obviously, is our Jennifer Kids Under Twelve. There's really no better place for baseball in the summer, where us and those tournaments all the time. Lights are just another opportunity for us to bring some of that activity into the town, you know, from out of town. And, you know, it brings positive activity up to the area at night. I know, you know, your legislature, the council, Palmoche, you know, just from a guy who can, who, you know, who loves to stock a snack bar at ten o'clock at night, it can be almost scary at that. So, you know, a little bit of activity sometimes. Try Doc! So, you know, we're just really looking forward to it. We think it'll be, you know, you know, I played Quincy baseball twenty-five years ago, and we've never had a new building ever in nineteen. So, I think it's pretty exciting. Dave has been a great help to us as far as, you know, helping us through the, you know, the municipal ins and outs and, again, we're very thankful.
I think we've got it covered.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your dedication to the city.
I'd also like to recognize Chris Kessar in the Parks Department. Chris, do you have anything at all you want to say? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
I can't express my gratitude to the committee for all of the city councils' support of us. And obviously, that stems from the mayor's commitment to the parks system. We have another great group of projects this year, continuing our attempt to try to spread the wealth across the whole city. You know, each year, we try to pick out projects that don't just focus on one neighborhood. You know, over the last few years, we've really been able to make a difference in every corner of the city. This year, we have a major project, obviously, we've seen before. Obviously, we have the Parker Project, I think, one-sixth is a tremendous project. We're more than close to within on that as well. But they may seem investment scenario, but I mean, that are desperately needed. So, I thank the committee for their support and thank you, I guess, for yours.
Thank you.
I'd also like to, Madam President, if I could, is, you know, the city of Quincy, if you go onto the website and you're looking to do other projects around the city under four criterias, you know, open space, historical preservation, affordable housing, or recreation, you meet under those four criteria, projects that you want to do. Any associations, organizations, PTO groups, activists out there that want to do these projects, you can go onto the city of Quincy website, and there's a link on there for community preservation, and it'll pop up the application on there. So, just words, anybody that's listening out there, that anybody can do this. Also, before I put in a form of a motion, I'd like to thank the CPC, the committee, for their hard work. Luisa Mendola is the director, as well as Coleman Barry is the chairman. Do a lot of hard work behind the scenes in the very, they take great pride in being part of that committee, so I want to give thanks to the entire group. If I could, I could put into a form of a motion to appropriate one million two hundred two thousand five hundred and thirty-four CPC to community preservation, historic and recreation projects.
All right. This motion seconded by Councilor Crowell. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Councilor Palmoche.
Thank you. First, I would say thank you, Councilor Devona, for your words of introduction on this measure. I will say that I heard that when Councilor Cofflin was our appointee to the CPC, the representative, he used to bring cookies and treats. You haven't brought any cookies or treats to that committee, so I told the folks there that I passed that law. But through you, Madam President, to the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker, do we, is bonding, have we done paying down the bond from the open space purchases, like the Jones parcel, and I know we bought some other property? Are we done with that, or is that a different expenditure that we'll be in the annual appropriation?
Through you, Madam President, I can get an answer for it. I believe we are, if not all the way home with that first round of original land purchases in the open space category. I believe we're just about there. We'll find them from number four tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, this is a question I always ask Councilor Cofflin. I think it is important to, again, thank you, Councilor Devona, for your role playing this. But what we have before us here really represents the findings of that commission, correct? The various recommendations that you're all...
The entire way of the reading is right here in front of us. If you have any questions upon that, right, one, two, three, and four.
And the only other thing is that I tend to really feel very strongly that even that hands of the commission, but I wanted to point out that how, you know, my role since the passing of Councilor McNeer, which is how delighted I believe Councilor McNeer would be to see the Parker School. And I know it's probably something that he, as a board council, is advocating strongly for, so let's do it. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Very well seen, none, this is quite the call.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Man.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Item two, Madam President, is a modification to the two thousand sixteen regular city council meeting agenda of last week. The council president, myself, and Mrs. Crispo had a discussion relative to the next several council meetings over April and May. And although we have a, although we have a rule of the city council that we don't meet the night before elections, we had some conversations with the mayor, and his intention was to bring the budget in on the first meeting in May. We had changed in January, due to the special election one-sixth, the May meeting to May ninth. After we had a discussion last Wednesday, we'd like to propose to change it back to May second, and we feel we can handle that and the final election one-sixth. And in concert with that, we'd like to change the first meeting in April from the eleventh day to back to the fourth for the same reason and keep the calendar. But the main thrust of this was for the May second meeting, Madam, because the mayor promised the budget will be presented for council on May second. In order to give the council four forty-five days, the May ninth date put us into a little, a little bit of a time constraint. So, the purpose of this part is just to amend the schedule for the rest of the year. You'll notice the second meeting in April is late because we're going to observe and change and observe the school vacation. We did not meet the week of April eighteenth. And that is our recommendation. All right. Anyone want to take a motion? A motion, right, motion made by Councilor Crowell, seconded by Councilor Lee Yang. Discussion on motion? Seeing none, this is quite the call.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam President, on the three-year agenda. Former request of the Commissioner of Public Works, the reclamation is on the matter. The city hereby accepts a five hundred and twenty-five square foot easement for roadway purposes at six twelve Washington Street, more particularly described as a proposed easement on plan entitled easement plan six twenty-two.
Wait, three.
Very well.
The corner of Washington Court and Washington Street.
Councilor Finn.
Well, actually, I would like to, would yield to the Councilor...
Crowell. Yes, very well. Councilor...
Again, this is a matter, as far as I'm concerned, that's passed this evening. This is a matter of public safety. It involves an easement. It's actually in Councilor Crowell's board, but it also involves an easement between donating to the city. And again, it's not, as far as I'm concerned, the Public Works would recommend class of asset.
Thank you, Councilor Finn. Councilor Crowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm certainly going to second the motion here this evening. Historically, this has been an issue that's been worked on for quite some time now, going back to former county council, Ramondi. And really, what we're doing here is widening the entry-exit way for the visual lines at the innovative point, which is Washington Court. Clearly, there is marine life boating that takes place down there, and here, we try to make that turn. It's certainly a little, a little challenging at times. So, the owner of the innovative point is the kind of, to donate easement to the city. And this is part of a much larger program that stems from the Fordham Bridge, which ultimately will put a place, set of lights at that area. So, this is sequence one, and I would second motion on passage.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion on motion? All right, seeing none, this is quite the call.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Number four. Be it a danger to the city council of the city of Quincy, the municipal code three seven five zoning, section nine A administration has amended, add to section nine point four point nine, minimum mandatory conditions.
Wait the reading.
All right, motion wait. My Councilor Palmoche, continue, Councilor Palmoche.
This is actually, this is actually in response to the last oversight committee hearing that we had. This, I put this in, it's a change that's recommended to address the subject of underground economy that Councilors Finn and Devona had raised by their resolution. It's my intention, I think tonight, we're going to schedule a follow-up oversight committee, at least one more, probably two more of those committee meetings. And I would simply ask that this be referred to the oversight, the ordinance committees, and the oversight committee will take this up at one of the next, the next or the following committee meeting to get to it with the folks who bring out the relative to Councilor Finn and Devona's resolution.
Oh, thank you. So, referral to oversight ordinance, also ordinance advertising, and then necessarily further planning after. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Palmoche. Yes, Councilor Finn.
Can I move that, the motion, the copy also consent to our solicitor?
Yes, and I copy consent to the solicitor as well. Thank you, Councilor Finn. Mr. Clark.
Number five on the agenda, whereas section seven point one of the city zoning code creates a mechanism which supports the development of affordable housing.
Good, wait three.
Councilor Finn.
This is, again, this was a proposal from the last session, going back to the issue of downtown and the removal at one point of the downtown, if only affordable, including area housing ordinance. And what I would just ask this evening, I think it's a conversation worth continuing, so I would ask that we could move that to ordinance and to the housing plan.
All right, very well said, George. Referral to ordinance and housing. Let's see, yes, I'm sorry.
At some point, yes. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then I would, again, also, if we could go down to that, and I appreciate that.
Yes, yes, Councilor Finn. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Next item, Madam President, is number six. It's an order for the municipal school building statement of interest on the Swanon Elementary School. Be it a draw, that having convened an open meeting on Monday, March twenty-first, prior to the closing day of the city council of Quincy, Quincy, and the court, who the child of violence and ordinance has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the master development authority a statement of interest by a way...
Motion, wait the reading. Councilor Kane. Councilor Crowell.
Yes, Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Next item is number nine, Madam President. Be it a danger to the city of Quincy accept the following gift of qualifications attached in the area and set forth. Five hundred dollars from Grand City Elementary Supply Tariff Foundation to the dead road ring.
All right. Motion accept the gift made by Councilor Devona, seconded by Councilor Crowell. On the motion?
Council Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Number seven on the agenda. Now therefore be it an order that the definition of land disposition agreement in the third amendment to the URDP appearing in section twelve point oh-two, section two P is amended by adding the following sentence at the end of the definition. Any land disposition agreement must be approved by the director of the top of the planning of community development, the mayor, and the city council.
Councilor Finn.
Yeah, again, this is, this is very critical. This and actually the next order that's following it, in my opinion. What this, it really, again, is representing is about three or four months of discussion that we had as we tried to eke out a URDP in the last section. And what this essentially does, is this memorializes within that URDP that city council actually needs to vote regarding any type of land disposition agreement. And notice that that refers to the public parcels that are part of this project. Unlike what was occurring before, where there was a single master developer and only one LDA for the entire project, we know that now this could involve, particularly on those public parcels, multiple land disposition agreements. So, I think that it's very critical that it's, that we set within the URDP itself this, that we do have a vote in relation to those land disposition agreements. And for this evening, obviously, if we can't move on this this evening, this needs to be referred. I would like to refer this both to the downtown committee and to the ordinance committee, and have it advertised. And I would, if we could, to expedite this, I would hope that, that the secretary, the chair of the downtown committee could hold public hearings at the earliest occasions.
All right, very well. So, referral to downtown ordinance committee, Joy O'Farrell. Is that okay, Councilor Finn? And advertise, and it must be advertised, well, but... So, next.
Next item. Next item, number eight. Now therefore be it an order that the definition of urban redevelopment covenant in the third amendment to the URDP.
Wait the reading.
All right, motion wait the reading. Councilor Palmoche.
Yes, I'll take this one, Joe. Along the same lines, it's kind of a package deal here. Councilor Finn and I are proposing. We're essentially, the goal of this is to, one, to ensure a public process, to ensure that there's transparency in the downtown development projects that move forward. The easiest way to kind of sum up what these two pieces of legislation do, they really, they fill a void that currently exists. When the LDA was terminated, fell apart in the way in which we had envisioned in a worst-case scenario that it would, in protecting the taxpayer's investment, the taxpayer's money, when the LDA and our one master development developer went away, the URDP alone doesn't cover everything for the downtown development. Because when it was originally drafted, URDP and the LDA fit together to protect the taxpayer, to protect the city, and to put forth a vision of the downtown development. So, when the LDA went by the wayside, we're left with the URDP, and that's currently what we're operating on or under. And quite frankly, in my opinion, I think there's some loopholes, and there's some gaps that need to be filled. And this is Councilor Finn and I's recommendation on two particular areas that should be remedied moving forward as we continue to develop the downtown. And I think this will overall allow us to ensure the taxpayers are protected. There's a lot of, there'll be millions of dollars of taxpayer money that goes into infrastructure down here, downtown, as we get going, as we move forward, especially with the parking garages. And that's something that these covenants speak directly to. So, we want to make sure that the taxpayers are getting their, their money's worth, if the city's protected. And I would simply ask for the same recommendation that Councilor Finn asked for, which is refer to ordinance and the economic, the downtown and economic development.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Councilor Palmoche. So, ordinance is downtown as well as advertising. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Next item is number nine, Madam President. Be it a danger to the city of Quincy accept the following gift of qualifications attached in the area and set forth. Five hundred dollars from Grand City Elementary Supply Tariff Foundation to the dead road ring.
All right. Motion accept the gift made by Councilor Devona, seconded by Councilor Crowell. On the motion?
Council Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Far.
Yes.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Yes.
Councilor Palmoche.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Next item is number ten on the agenda. This is a resolve from five city councils, whereas the city solicitors are pointing by reports to the mayor, and whereas outside council...
Motion, wait the reading. Councilor Palmoche.
Thank you. This resolve is essentially, it's a request to the mayor. The city council, as we all know, the city council cannot initiate spending in any form. Any spending that happens in the city must begin in the executive branch, not the legislative branch. So, what this is, is simply a request, is the mayor is putting together his budget for next year, for presentation that we heard will occur on May second, as he's, as he's putting that together with his team. This is simply a request from this body, and I hope we can vote on it tonight, but this is a request that would be from this body, asking that the mayor's budget reflects the council's desire, should this pass, to establish a line item in the city council budget that would be at the discretion and with the oversight of the city council president, to allow for the city council to independently engage in outside legal counsel, should the body or the president deem that to be necessary in some situation. Now, the purpose is really to ensure that the council has access to outside legal counsel when necessary. I don't foresee, I don't know of anything on the horizon that we necessarily need it for in the immediate future. There has been instances in the past where we have needed outside counsel. The biggest one that comes to mind is that this body has outside counsel, and Mr. Jim Shea, who represents us relative to downtown, we have at other times had outside counsel in the history of the chamber. There are two real main instances when this body relies on the expertise of professionals, and that's when it comes to financial matters or legal matters. We didn't always have an auditor who was our financial expert, but at some point in the past, our forefathers in the city said, if we're going to be able to do our job right and effectively, to do it well, and to be a check and balance in city government, and make sure we're authorizing spending, that we have an independent voice who reports directly to us and to no one else in the city government. They said it's important to do that in financial matters, and that's how we ended up with an auditor. And I was here, I think it was Councilor La Forest and I's first year here, when the auditor, there was a debate whether the auditor should be a contractual position or a full-time position. Ultimately, it became a full-time position at the request of this body. There were some who said it would be better if it was an hourly, if there was some independent contractor who specialized in these matters, who the council could engage with when necessary. The body decided to hire a full-time person, and we have a full-time auditor. This is the other approach, the one that was discussed similarly to the auditor. And this is to allow for the council to engage with an outside counsel, not hire a staff member, not bring on the costs associated with the staff member, but simply to have a line item in the city council budget, with the oversight and discussion of the council president, that would allow for this body, should it deem necessary, to have access to outside counsel. I think that the auditor is an indispensable part of our ability, you know, to help provide that check and balance and to do our job well, that the people elected us to do. And I think that we need a similar situation where we have access to a legal opinion that would report directly to us in the limited instances where perhaps we so choose to have a different opinion than that that comes from the solicitor's office, or have a different attorney than the one, than the ones that are available in the solicitor's office. And this isn't a knock on the solicitor's office, but just in the, in the nature of government, we're always working together with the mayor, we work well together with the mayor, this body traditionally has, and I trust we will continue to. But there are, there are times, and there was an instance in this past session, when this body unanimously had requested to have outside counsel appointed. That didn't happen because we could not fund that outside counsel ourselves. Spending cannot be initiated by this body. And it was disappointing that the funding wasn't made available, or that that wasn't discussed with the body, after unanimously we had requested outside counsel. And I think it behooves us to make sure that that never happens again for this, this body, the current nine, eight individuals that make up this body, and for those in the future. So, I think it's an important step for the council's autonomy to have access. We're not necessarily going to spend this money, except the discretion of the council president, and certainly if this body would have voted, if we wanted to engage outside counsel, it would be up to her to, to carry that out. So, any unfunded, or any unspent money would certainly be able to be returned back to free cash, if, you know, use whatever we, whatever the city has available to us at that time to use that free cash, certainly go back to the taxpayer on the next, the next budget. So, it's not as if it's a waste of money if we don't use it, but it's really about having the ability to engage outside counsel if we want it. This is the only way that I can think of, that we can ensure that we have that autonomy to determine when we need outside counsel, be able to get. We have the autonomy to determine it, but as was shown in the last session, even when we make that determination, and a unanimous decision of this body says, hey, we want to hire outside counsel, there's one missing piece, and that's the money to pay for. There was no money made available the last time we did it, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, should this body or some future body need it. And I think this would be an important step in that direction. So, I'm hoping that, I move the passage. I move the passage, and I'll be voting in support of this this evening, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
All right. Motion by Councilor Palmoche, seconded by Councilor Finn. Councilor Finn, and then Councilor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, I want to stress this, because again, I have great respect for our current city solicitoring, but this particular provision has been...
So I'm hoping that, I move the passage, I move the passage, and I'll be voting in support of this this evening, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
All right. Motion by Counsel Paujic, seconded by Counsel Finn. Counsel Finn, and then Counsel Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to stress this, because again, I have great respect for our current city solicitor, but this particular provision has been, this question's been around for a long time, and it's not meant it was a reflection on any city solicitor present or past for that matter, but I thought it might be helpful to even give some understanding about my own logic when the last time the land disposition agreement was presented before us. We had, there are times, and this happens more than once within the city council, where the process of things lead you, where the mayor's office has already negotiated something, and then now you're getting that to examine and review. And very few of us around here are that adept, I think, particularly from a legal standpoint in terms of evaluating all of these things, but they clearly, given the fact that they've already been negotiated, demand a second pair of eyes to go through that. The land disposition agreement that landed on our desks was about yay-bay at that particular point in time, and the issues and the legal issues involved in that were incredibly complex, so much so that they thought having someone wholly and totally at your service in relation to that, to be able to provide some assistance, and I might say, given the small amount, would hopefully used quite judiciously and wisely, is, can be very helpful in terms of trying to move towards making some decisions. I can think of another instance where we didn't have outside counsel per se, that was the honeywell agreement. We could have really used outside counsel at that particular point, because the same situation presented itself. We had a situation where, again, a deal had been negotiated, was dropped on our desks, and being pushed at that particular point in time, and believing, I think we probably could have used at that point some other eyes, and that was a different administration, different time, but the principle remains the same. We are here to speak on behalf of the voters, to the citizens of Quincy, and we are called at times to be a check and balance and to ask some of those difficult questions. In order to ask questions, there's a certain precondition of knowledge that you have to have, and if you have certain documents or things before you of which you have no understanding, it becomes very difficult to ask those important and critical questions. So I think this is actually something that's long overdue. The only way I can draw a parallel, and actually was recommended to us by the solicitor's office, and was one of the greatest things, by way of analogy, was putting to our permitting process the resources available for peer review, for example, which turns out to have been, again, in my opinion, fantastic in terms of making difficult decisions. This, by way of analogy, applies to some of the difficult legal questions and issues that come before us, that gives us that resource to have a difficult look at. You know, we are at times going to have differences that are so great, as we did around the question of the old planning director, that we very quickly reach what the philosophers call infirmity stability, that we can't even agree on the basis at that point. And so it's helpful to be able to have that outside resource available, to come in and be able to frame for us what some of those issues are. So I strongly support this and encourage everyone here, that's hopefully, to support this resolution. Ultimately, the choice or decision about that rests in the hands of the mayor, because as we know, this is a strong model of government. But again, I think what's best about that model is the ability to have some discussion, some checks, some balances in relation to it. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Finn. Counsel Kane.
Thanks, Madam President. I can appreciate the commentary from my colleagues, Counsel Paujic and Counsel Finn, in seeking out extra resources to have to our mail for such circumstances, to clarify matters that we don't necessarily agree with the city solicitor's office. I just want to make sure that we're not being short-sighted in this approach, because if we're trying to, I guess, align sort of the position that the auditor holds, as a counselor or for the council, I think that $60,000 for fiscal year might not be an appropriate number, and why are we looking at this as a full position to have? And the difference between an external resource, which would be outside legal counsel, and an internal resource, like our auditor serves as. And as we've seen in matters that have been discussed before this council in this session along, $60,000 for outside counsel might not be enough, so I want to make sure that we're not coming back to ask for more, such as the city solicitor has come to ask for outside matters and outside judgment line item within the budget. So I'm not going to be supporting this, I think we should be looking at this from a much longer-term perspective. If we're looking to have someone that can look with a fresh set of eyes, I think we might be looking at this from the wrong approach, we might as well be looking for a resource to hold disposition for legal counsel, for the city council as opposed to just the line item budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Kane. Anyone else wishing to speak, having not heard the statement heard? Anyone? All right. Very well. So there's a motion made, seconded by, on Mr. Clark, will you call Crowell, please?
Counsel Kane.
No.
Counsel Crowell. Counsel Devona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel LaFour.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
I'm sorry, I don't see anything.
Counsel Liang.
Present.
Present, please.
Counsel Paujic.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
All right, the resolve passes five minutes.
All right, next item, Mr. Clark.
Next item, also a resolve seeking capital planning resolution. You resolve a part of the budget, that as a part of the budgetary process, the administration department heads present a written capital plan.
Motion made, reading. Counsel Paujic.
I've talked about this so often that I forget the last time we talked about it. My daughter's three, and anytime she refers to anything in the past, she says last night. It could happen a year ago, three days ago, she says last night, so I honestly feel like the last time we discussed this was very recently, but I could be wrong. This resolution seeks to, it's another request to the administration, that during the budget process, that each department prepare, to the extent that it's reasonable, obviously some departments probably wouldn't apply to, but to the extent that it's reasonable, that the department heads project a capital needs plan to us. I know I've discussed this in the last at least three budget seasons. There are some municipalities who put this online for their entire municipality, the entire city or town, and say, you know, this is what we need over the next five years. A fire department needs a fire truck, police department needs three more cruisers, the parks department needs a bucket truck, Parks and Forest needs a bucket truck, whatever it is. We tend, in the city of Quincy, I have found, to not discuss capital planning in a long-term sense, with a long view, but we do it when the DOR certifies leftover money in the budget as free cash, and then we address those capital needs. And that might be the best way to do it, I'm not saying it isn't, but every year, we get presented, at the end of a fiscal year, we get presented with a laundry list of items that we're told are desperately needed, and we need to make these improvements in this expenditure, when we've never had a discussion about that in any real meaningful way in the years leading up to it. So this just seeks to essentially set our focus, couple of years in the future. Every department head, I trust, knows what they need down the line. You know, like I said, fire truck, bucket truck, what have you, the DPW, we know, the DPW commissioner, I trust, knows which pieces of equipment are going to need to be replaced in the fleet in the next couple of years, in the next three to five years. So this is really just casting a little bit longer of the sightline. When we do the annual budget, let's also discuss what our needs are long-term, bigger ticket items, just so that this body and the public has a better understanding of where the taxpayer dollars are needed most throughout the city and in which department. So I may have to, I'm going to move the question, or not move the question, I'm going to make a motion. Make a motion that we approve this resolve and send it to the mayor, and I'll be voting in favor of it, and my colleagues to do the same.
All right. Motion made. One second, please. Okay. Motion made, and seconded by Counsel Forrest. Counsel LaFour.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. I want to thank Counsel Paujic for bringing this forward, it kind of reminds me of Brown Dogs Day, right? Every year you have this topic, and every year you have this conversation, budget time, you just coordinate things forward, and standard question that we always ask, we ask, what do you have long-term capital needs? So I really think this gives us some good perspective. I know the mayor's in downtown, will address this year, really put into perspective of looking down the road, and where does we want to see our city go? We just need a bit more strategy to understand what the needs are, and then to look ahead and need those improvements. So I will be supporting this, and I think it's a good time to start this discussion in this format, to give a little bit of a look ahead as to what the long-term needs are. I know which department head does tend to act for us, and it comes, okay, free cash, okay, the spend of whose most, you know, whose capital plan improvement is most needed, right? So the needs are great, and I know we're going to be quite extensive when we see the results of this request, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel LaFour. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. So the motion's made, seconded, Mr. Clark, will you call him?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel Devona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel LaFour.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Paujic.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next resolve, from Counsel Crowell, seeking out Nathan Bond.
All right. Motion made, reading. Counsel Crowell.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I share this, because you are, and I would like to amend the ask in terms of replacing Bond Counsel with our subwests, to say he's actually our financial advisor. And essentially, we just shared a little bit of the ask for the capital improvement plan trajectory. We know that we're in a very interesting time in terms of our city's history, and there's a lot of great things happening. Spirit of the message, as it pertains to this particular resolution, is just coming into budget season, let's level-set the conversation, let's understand when we've been historically from a spending standpoint, let's understand what our debt management looks like, and I guess to kind of put a bow around Counsel Paujic's resolution, let's understand a little bit what the future looks like. Spending is an essential function of municipal government, I think we'd all agree with that, and I do as well, but whereas we're hearing things about the capital improvement plans, as well as looking at the FY '17 budget, as well as, you know, potential additional resources allocated to the debt funding, I just want to have the expert in the room, who will hopefully act as somewhat of an education law with those folks who haven't been in the budget season, but I just feel that timing is now, and we just want to get our head around it, because the reality is, the city council isn't working in the issue of the downtown, or whatever it is, on a daily basis, like the administration, so we just want to, we just want to understand what's going on. Just give an opportunity for all parties to share information, that's pretty much it. So I'm moving the passage.
All right. Motion's made. Counsel Finn.
I would be happy to second this, but I was wondering if we might, I know we amended it slightly, but I think it would be valuable if we could have both the bond to the consultant as well as the bond counsel present. Oftentimes, the bond counsel's been pretty important in relation to clarify questions we may have specifically about particular expenditures related to the bond, so I would be.
Set that as well. And then, Counsel.
Ideally, we'd like to just get the experts in the room, cover up in time.
Very well. All right, it has been updated, amended. All right, so motion made, seconded by Counsel Finn. Further discussion on the motion, discussion. Same time, Mr. Clark.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel Devona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel LaFour. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Paujic.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
The final resolve. Madam President, resolve seeking development of pedestrian master plan. Counsel Kane.
Okay. Motion made, reading. Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, while this is a serious issue, this is what I consider to be the fun stuff that we do here, because it's something that can really involve citizens of the city, and something that's drastically going to improve the livability of Quincy, especially as we see it grow in its composition and footprint. So I put forth a resolution today that would support the development of what we're calling a pedestrian master plan, so this is largely in conjunction with some of my colleagues who supported this, and the mayor's office who has likely signed off on such a concept in conjunction with Quincy 400 Plan, and in recognizing the need to make Quincy greater than it already is, and make it a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. Obviously, we've had some unfortunate public circumstances recently, where there have been even fatalities involved in pedestrian accidents, and what this would seek to do is put together between the agencies of the city, citizens, obviously, and members of the council, that will put forth an education, engineering, enforcement, encouragement, evaluation, and recommended plan that would allow us to move forward together. So I hope that in addition to the counselors, my colleagues who have supported this resolution today, they would vote on moving this forward.
All right, thank you. So motion made by Counsel Kane, and seconded by Counsel Liang. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Counsel Finn.
I just wanted to congratulate the counselor on this work that he's done, and stress how critically important I believe it is. And again, it's not that long of a campaign, when you're out knocking doors and hearing what people have to think, and this is definitely one of the issues that's on people's minds. But there's one component in it that I hope doesn't get lost, because I think this is, that would be a prioritized list of desirable long-term pedestrian infrastructure improvements, and associated cost estimates, along with maps detailing those improvements. There's a lot that can be done, because unfortunately, as we found out, there's some very dangerous spots here in Quincy. I was walking with a constituent along a button-in Albion Road, across from the Hannafords, and when you look at it, the common sense, in fact, I was told when Hannafords went in there, this very issue was raised, that the crossings are way too far apart, and that Hannafords has a walk leading right to it, and no crosswalk or any signs that really match that. And, you know, people are always going to try to cut across that as opposed to walk you, because of the great distance between where those two crosswalks are. So the timing of this particular resolution couldn't be better, and again, I congratulate it, but I think we cannot lose sight of this. It reminded me also that Counsel LaFour and myself submitted that, I can't remember when, forgive me exactly, but we had talked about signage, crosswalks, signage, solar-powered signage, that even there was some interest, part of the IDW in terms of being engaged and creating, that would allow to drive greater attention to these crosswalks and critical places. So it's long overdue, and again, I'm going to gladly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Finn. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, I will just say one thing, I do support this, and, you know, the other thing is, I don't want to make it seem as though we're not highlighting the great work of the folks in the traffic and parking department, they do do a wonderful job. It's just our city is so enormous, and there are so many, as you say, problematic crosswalk areas and pedestrian crossing areas, and we have had some very tragic, and unfortunately, a recent fatal accident in particular in the area that Counselor Finn was speaking about. So it's so important to get this underway, but again, not to highlight, not to denigrate the great work that the folks in traffic and parking do, they do a phenomenal job there, but they can only do so much with what they have and a small staff, and so I think this might be a great way to sort of marshal all of our efforts together and attempt to tackle this very important and serious problem. So again, echo the congratulations of Counsel Finn to Counsel Kane for putting this together, and say that I will be supporting this as well this evening. So if no one else wishes to speak, Mr. Clark, will you call the role?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell. Counsel Devona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn. Counsel LaFour.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Paujic.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, that will, very well, with approval of the meeting minutes from, I believe we have two sets of meeting minutes approved.
All right, all those against? The ayes, ayes. Communications and reports from the mayor or other city officers and city boards, Mr. Clark.
I have six communications, Madam President. The first one's addressed to you, President Quincy City Council, the F. President Hughes. I'm writing to petition the city of Quincy to designate or accept Oak Grove Terrace as a city street. Oak Grove Terrace is currently a driveway of the border of Quincy and Brink, as the abattoir on the majority of the land that runs onto Oak Grove Terrace. I believe that the city would benefit from accepting this street in the following ways. One, and except that Oak Grove Terrace would have to comply with the requirements of this public street, meaning that the proper sized material construction methods would have to be met in order for it to be designated a public street. Currently consists of broken, on no pavement, no curbstone, in improper, if any, rain. All these conditions must make it unsafe for those who use it. Two, once approved and accepted by the city, Oak Grove Terrace would not only aesthetically be aesthetically more pleasing, but would enhance access to the surrounding boroughs, would also be able, would also be able to be plowed and kept clean more easily. The ability to police a fight about the usual roadway would be a much better once approved and accepted.
All right, motion, motion from Counselor Leeang to discuss with the reading and just distribute the communication to the council.
This is a communication and should be a public works manual distributed to the council.
Very well.
City engineer report.
Very well. Counselor Pong, did you wish to?
Would you, would send a copy, can we also send a copy to the planning department and to the mayor's office?
Yes.
And if, and if, when we do have a public hearing on this, I know Mr. Fitzgerald is in the audience, but if and when we do have a public hearing on this, if we could also make sure it's advertised and we notify the limited hearing of residents that are, there are many, but...
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Pong. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Charles.
Next, three occasions involving six or all traffic. Next one, add handicap hobby space at one seven nine Kever Cab, Counselor Crowe.
Ordinance advertised.
Next one, add no hobby, Alton Road from driveway of number forty-one Alton Road to the driveway of number twenty-seven Alton Road, Counselor Crowe.
Ordinance advertised.
Next one, Counselor Kane, add handicap hobby at one seven five Stafford Street.
Ordinance advertised.
Next, remove handicap hobby at thirty-one Sagamora, Counselor Kane.
Ordinance advertised.
And lastly, Counselor Finn, remove handicap hobby at fifty-nine Hall Sale.
Ordinance advertised.
I have no further commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Unfinished business from the preceding meeting?
I have none.
All right. One, reports of committees. Chair recognizes Counselor Leeang.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to bring out our Downtown Economic Development Committee from the previous meeting that we had, council order number two thousand sixteen dash zero five zero, amendment number three, to expand the district of the URDP to include the MDTA. I want to thank, again, the councilors for your hard work and effort in reaching out to the community and communicating with them, most specifically with Counselor Forrest and President Hughes, with your community meeting, stop with the planning and the funding that will go into the actual development of the MDTA project. I also want to thank those in the administration that had answered a slew of questions that we had for you as well, you know, to speak to what this expansion would mean, what the financial responsibilities are for the taxpayers, as well as what we're going to be able to get through grants. So speaking to that, I do understand that we do want to go ahead and expand this, and there's positive recommendation from the committee in order to get the ball rolling on these grants, to be able to secure the funding that we do need to, again, not even do the actual construction process, but just in the planning phase that we're in now, we do need the funding for that as well. So I, again, want to want to just say that there is positive recommendation from the committee to expand the URDP districts to include the MDTA, so that we can move forward in the grant applications that were, that are carved in their way. And I do want to stress to all those as well, and reiterate again, again, that this does not approve the plans that are proposed to the MDTA in the space next to it for the courthouse. This extension simply means that we're just including the MDTA in the district and nothing else. That planning phase, the financing phase, is still a conversation that we will continue to be a part of as residents, as well as a council body, so I just wanted to make sure that that information's formed.
All right, so making a motion, then, Counselor Leeang, okay, motion to approve made by Counselor Leeang, seconded, okay, Counselor Forrest, seconded as well? Okay, Counselor, seconded by Counselor Forrest and on the motion, Counselor.
Sure, I just want to clarify, we had this, some confusion at the neighborhood meeting, when we had this neighborhood meeting about proposal and starting a conversation, three different things going on. One, the extension of the URDP. Two, the discussion about, you know, the courthouse and redevelopment, and then potential funding of that, of that project. That project is in its bareness, as I was going to say, completely pre-ame, I think people were thinking redevelopment's further along. The URDP decision's very much a policy decision, amending the area is included in our environmental permitting, I think by point of reference, the Edwara Drive, Sewall, redevelopment project, and existing coastal construction project took over ten months of permitting. So being a part of the whole downtown environmental permitting project, it's really important to understand when the city came to off the streetworks, that streetworks was undergoing some permitting work for us, that environmental permitting is completely the entire downtown. That was a big piece of the project. People don't see that work day in, day out, they see it out at city hall and in the playground park. So just kind of want to clarify, extending the URDP, whatever the future of the T will be, while they are, they're just happening in parallel, and the conversation about what is what happened, whether it's retail, is just beginning, so for those, I don't care. So I will be supporting tonight's vote about amending the URDP boundaries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Forrest. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Pong.
Thank you. I threw you to the city clerk. Mr. Shea, on Chairwoman Liang's motion to take two sixteen dash fifty out of committee, does there have to be a vote to take in the committee and a second vote to pass it, or can it all be done in one vote?
It can all be done in one vote, in my opinion, Counselor.
Okay, all right. And through you, Madam President, to either Mr. Walker or Mr. Simmons, who's thankfully finished up his project, yeah. I just had a question about the process for URDP approval, and I'm going to support this, for all the reasons that Counselor Leeang had more articulate stated than I can be able to. But Jim, so on the approval of the URDP, there's a process, and we have two amendments that were introduced tonight by Counselor Finn and I. There's this amendment, that would be if the body chose to amend it, again, that would be the fourth amendment to the URDP, correct?
The two that were submitted tonight?
Right.
Yes.
Say that, that was fair of you. So, so this has been amended, this is the third time, right?
Yes, the third attempt at amendment is tonight.
Okay.
Commanding for you now.
And so the process for passage has to be, is there, is there, I know there are other bodies that need to approve, the planning board needs to approve?
Yes, the planning board, there's the citizens advisory committee, and then there has to be one public hearing on, to allow public input beyond the citizen advisory committee.
Okay, and that's theoretically, there was two, or three in this case, but two, one formally by this body in the Downtown Economic Development Committee, and then there's also one in the planning board, right? I mean, that's a public hearing.
Correct.
And then there's also the board councilors, Hughes and Forrest held a public public hearing, a community meeting about the project in general. So, so the planning board has approved this prior to coming to us, right? Amendment three, third amendment to the URDP.
Amendment three has gone through the process, yes.
And did, perhaps, got a question to the mayor's representative. Was amendment two approved by the citizens advisory committee, and if so, when did that happen?
Through, Madam President. I'll have to check on that, Counselor.
All right. Because I remember, I don't know, I don't know, I think I was on this body when the second amendment occurred, and I just don't recall the same process. But that's, you've answered all my questions, I'm going to vote this for.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Pong, yes, Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be certain though, too, is it is still the intention, and I don't know whether it's Mr. Fats, or Mr. Gary, it is the mayor's intention to submit a so-called amendment four, is that still?
Yes.
I'll throw you then, perhaps, Mr. Walker.
Yes, Counselor.
Is it possible, is that going to, is that coming soon in relation to this, because perhaps, you know, again, we can deal with this and have this final URDP wrapped up, including the amendments that we proposed this evening?
Yes, Counselor. It's coming very soon.
Very soon. To a council meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? All right, why, I do want to say one thing, I want to thank Counselor Leeang for her hard work in the Downtown Committee, as well as Counselor Forrest, who co-hosted a neighborhood meeting with me a few weeks ago. We also, or I also got input by bringing this to the neighborhood associations that are in the general and most adjacent vicinity to this particular area. I will be voting to support this this evening, and did get emails and calls and heard from folks who have concerns, real concerns, as to why regarding the introduction of a justice center or a courthouse in a particular area. But taking this vote this evening and adding this to the URDP does not rubber stamp that in any way, nor does it give it a green light to go, it simply adds the T area to the plan. And I think it's very important as a key element to the downtown to add the area. As was stated by several other folks this evening, there is a great deal of public process involved in the, in the remaining months regarding a feasibility study, and is this even possible to put a courthouse there? Is there anything, what is going to go there? So if we want to do anything with that area, just in terms of fixing the T and the garage, which is not only an eyesore, but really a safety hazard, poses a safety hazard to the neighborhood immediately, then it's important to take this vote this evening. And I, who along with the other neighbors who showed up at the meetings, live in the neighborhood and care greatly about what we do there. And so I don't think this negatively impacts, it only adds to the project and it's going to serve the neighborhood, I think, in a positive way. And what's going to go there is going to be fully vetted and have an opportunity to be heard by the public and by those of us who are in government and making some of these decisions. So I'm going to be supporting this this evening, not in a blind, in the left rubber stamping way, but in the way that has been really vetted over these past couple of weeks with myself, Counselor Forrest, Counselor Leeang, and very informed decisions this evening, I think, from, from a lot of us. So I want to thank those who took the time to come and give their input in the public process, as well as those folks who came to present, because there were really some knowledgeable folks regarding a lot of our questions at this very preliminary stage. So thank you all. And with that, Mr. Clark, if you take a call or a vote, please.
This is Council on two zero one six dash five oh. Amendment number three to the URDP. Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowe, yes. Counselor DeBona, yes. Counselor Finn, yes. Counselor Forrest, yes. Counselor Leeang, yes. Counselor Pong, yes. President Hughes, yes. Eight members of the board.
Thank you. Further reports of committees, Counselor Finn.
Oh, is it a report or schedule?
Report.
I got a report.
Yes, report, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. It's more just for the record, this evening I had the privilege of joining venture coverage with the chairman of the public work community along the finance to hear about Commissioner Ramonkey's I and I project as we go forward. The reason, I just did get the first committee, it was a positive recommendation, however, the reasoning behind not moving forward is too far behind, maybe just going to tip the advertising around, we're a couple days behind, so we're going to leave that in committee and I would assume we do the ask, you know, the council meeting, but again, just, well, mainly for the markets as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Presentation of petition of memorials and remonstrance. Any, no, all right. Motion to orders and resolutions? None, okay. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings, Counselor Pong.
Yes, the oversight committee meeting will be, committee meeting, the oversight committee will be meeting on April twenty eighth, seven P M. to discuss, impart the order and the resolution that came in tonight, but also to continue our discussion on two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, Counselor Finn and Counselor DeBona's order, resolution relative to the underground economy and misclassification of employees.
Oh, April twenty, yes.
April twenty eighth, Thursday, seven P M.
What is that?
Oversight committee. We will be having, come well prepared, because we will have a bevy of distinguished guests presenting before the committee. We'll have a representative from the attorney general's office, as well as five or six representatives from the insurance industry, various insurers, as well as the insurance fraud bureau, folks who investigate these kind of malfeasances. Malfeasance, malfeasance, the plural.
Now, seven P M. I don't know.
Seven P M., sorry, seven P M., April twenty eighth.
Seven P M. Very well, April twenty eighth. Thank you, Counselor Pong. Further scheduling of committee meetings. Yes, Counselor Leeang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to schedule Downtown and Economic Development Committee meeting along with Counselor Forrest, who's chair of the ordinance committee, for the two, the updates, the two URDP sections that were brought in front of us today. So I'd like to schedule it before a council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting. So just taking a look at the new dates that we have here. The next one we have is going to be...
The fourth of the twenty fifth?
The fourth of the twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Oh, I, so I chair the orders. Do you want to do either, either matters of the mayor?
The fourth is better for you?
We'll go with the twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth?
Yep.
Okay, the twenty fifth?
Right.
Okay, twenty fifth.
And so, I guess...
What month are we talking about?
April fifteenth, sorry. April twenty fifth or six thirty?
Downtown. Should that be, I don't know whether, we'll discuss offline whether it goes downtown or ordinance, ordinance committee, or the whole, all councilors?
Um, it should go to ordinance, I think, right?
Join, 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 I don't know. I'll look there.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? No, yes, Counselor Kane.
I was wondering, related to those two matters, we did, we kind of expedited the last one, but I'm wondering if we schedule a public hearing related to those, perhaps even the same evening?
This is your URDP.
For the two URDPs, because I understand it's moved to the twenty fifth, so we're having that.
So public hearing on the six forty five. So, so public hearing on the twenty fifth, that's our July?
I guess that's, yeah, for the fourth personally. Do we want, can we have a public hearing on the...
So, one seventy eight.
If, if we, we're...
Sure.
Can we have it by the fourth, the public hearing? That may be tough.
No, we can get them out of the house before, we have in ways to stay.
Do you have anything else in the...
Well, you couldn't pass them that night, we certainly have a public hearing on the fourth.
If we can fit them in on the twenty fifth, that's, that's fine. Great.
Six thirty, six forty five, same night?
Six thirty and six forty five, so.
Can I make them, can I make the suggestion to be six thirty and six thirty five?
Six thirty.
If history is any indication, you can always bleed into the other one, but why have us sit around for fifteen minutes not working?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah. Okay, all right, sure. Anyone else? Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you. I guess... And so I don't think this negatively impacts, it only adds to the project and is going to serve the neighborhood, I think, in a positive way. And what's going to go there is going to be fully vetted and have an opportunity to be heard by the public and, and by those of us who are in government and making some of these decisions. So I'm going to be supporting this, this evening, not in a blind, left rubber stamping way, but in the way that has been really vetted over these past couple of weeks with myself, Council La Force, Council Liang, a very informed decision this evening, I think, from, from a lot of us. So I want to thank those who took the time to come and give their input in the public process as well as those folks who came to present, because there were really some knowledgeable folks regarding a lot of our questions at this very preliminary stage. So thank you all. And with that, Mr. Clark, if you take a call of the vote, please.
This is Council 2016-50. Amendment number three to the URDP. Council Kane.
Yes.
Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council La Force.
Yes.
Council Leeang.
Yes.
Council Calhoun.
Thank you. Further reports of committees, Council Finn. All right.
Was it a report or scheduling?
Report.
I hear a report.
Yes, report, Council Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. It's more just for the record, this evening I had the privilege of joining venture coverage with the chairman of the Public Works Committee along the finance to hear about Commissioner Ramoni's I and I project as we go forward. The reason, I just did get the first committee, it was a positive recommendation, however, the reasoning behind not moving forward is due to, maybe just the advertising, I don't know, really who are compensated behind, so we're going to leave that in committee and I would assume you'd ask, you know, the council meeting, but again, just to make it clear to the markets as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Crowe. Presentation of petition for memorials and remonstrance. Any? No. All right. Motion to orders and resolutions? None. Okay. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings, Council Calhoun.
Yes, the Oversight Committee meeting will be, committee meeting, the Oversight Committee will be meeting on April 28th, 7:00 PM to discuss, impart the order for the resolution that came in tonight, but also to continue our discussion on 2016-15, Councilor Finn and Councilor DeBona's order, resolution relative to the underground economy and misclassification of employees.
Oh, April 3.
April 28th. It's Thursday. 7:00 PM.
What is that?
Oversight Committee. We will be having, come, come well prepared, because we will have a bevy of distinguished guests presenting before the committee. We'll have a representative from the attorney general's office, as well as five or six representatives from the insurance industry, various insurers, as well as the insurance fraud bureau, folks who investigate these kind of malfeasances. Is that the part of, malfeasance, the part of?
Malfeasance, I don't know.
7:00 PM, sorry, 7:00 PM, April 28th.
So, very well, April 28th. Thank you, Council Calhoun. Further scheduling of committee meetings. Yes, Council Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to schedule Downtown and Economic Development Committee meeting along with Council La Force, who's chair of the ordinance committee for the two, the updates, the two updates, the URDP sections that were brought in front of us today. So I'd like to schedule before a council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting, so just taking a look at the new dates that we have here. The next one we have is going to be?
The 4th of November, 25th or April?
The 4th of the 25th.
Yeah.
Oh, I, so I'll share the ordinance. Either, either matters of the mayor.
The 4th is better for you?
You'll go with the 25th.
The 25th?
Yep.
Okay, the 25th?
Right.
Okay, 25th.
What month are we talking?
April, sorry.
April 25th or 6:30?
Downtown. Should that be, I don't know whether, we'll discuss offline whether it goes Downtown or ordinance, ordinance committee or the whole, all councilors.
Um, it should go with ordinance, I think, right?
Joint, okay. Joint, joint, doesn't it, right? Okay.
Anything else? Anyone, no, yes, Council Kane.
I was wondering, related to those two matters, we did, we kind of expedited it at the last, but I wondered, can we schedule a public hearing related to those, perhaps even the same evening?
This is your new order.
For the two ordinancees, your new IDP, because I understand this moved to 25th, just to have it happen.
So, so public hearing on the 25th?
I guess that's, that, yeah.
Okay.
For, for personally.
We can do.
Do we want, can we have the public hearing on the?
77, 78.
If, if we, we can, can we have it by the 4th, the public hearing? That may be tough.
No, we can get them out as before, we have a, a ways this day.
Do you have anything else in the?
Well, you couldn't pass them that night, we certainly have a public hearing on the 4th.
All right, if we can fit them in on the 25th, that's, that's fine. Great.
6:30?
6:45, same night?
6:30 and 6:45, sorry.
Can I make them?
Yeah.
Can I make the suggestion to be 6:30 and 6:35?
6:30.
If history is any indication.
Yeah, right.
You can always bleed into the other one, but why have us sit around for 15 minutes not working?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah. Okay, all right, sure. Anyone else? Yes.
Great, thank you. I guess I was kind of looking to over to Council Crowe. Next week, Monday, the 28th, the DEP is having a public meeting on the compressor station. I've been partnering with Council Crowe, I've been across the world, the more Council La Force have affected how really can turn the leadership on this issue. I know that we did last session a council resolution opposing the compressor station. This is the next level of process, I guess. So there's actually spray, it's been attached, provides transportation. I know a lot of these meetings, the other way that the project is cited, in way that while it does have an impact on Quincy, they've been hosting majority of the meetings. So each time along the way, Council Crowe and I asked for, you know, opportunity for our residents in Quincy, this time they've offered to provide transportation. So do you have the details on the pickups? I think the Orion Towers, Pagnano Towers are doing, doing have maintenance, I think, just send out the email information, I'll send it out on news on our social media, but next week, Monday, March 28th, there'll be a lot of media about that meeting, so we'll be there in representation of Council Crowe and I.
In that vein, I appreciate you bringing that up, Council. It's another opportunity for folks to come and participate publicly in the process. Now, there is a group that is organized and really has been a wonderful conduit in terms of distributing information, alternatively outside of myself and Council La Force, and I just want to make that known, that actually over this weekend, we spent some time, we letting, whoa, 500 pamphlets, you know, to the Quincy Point Way of the neighborhood, we leave them in section of Germantown, and from what I understand, that process will repeat itself to an extent on a Tuesday, Sunday, but Saturday. And, you know, none of this stuff goes without organization and citizens won't step up and address the cost, because the reality is, this is a big situation, the decision is made way above, you know, us here, but we're doing everything that we can, we're organizing, it's sad to notice that, you know, this has no place in the community, especially in environmental justice community. And I just want to publicly say, I appreciate all those folks and the efforts that they're putting forth, because it's, it's critical. So next, next, 28th, 5:30, Abigail Adams Middle School Way, and certainly open to the public, and you'll see more notification as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Crowe. I just want to also, before we adjourn this evening, recognize the Quincy Police Department as well as Quincy Housing Authority, who are partnering at a few locations, one of them, I think, being, yes, and then Council Finn, one of them being 80 Clay Street, Pagnano Towers and, is there another?
Orion Towers.
Orion Towers as well. There was a recognition for a need for more intervention by the Quincy Police Department, so they will be setting up facilities at each one of those particular locations. The first sort of kickoff, that would be Wednesday afternoon at 80 Clay Street, and I want to thank, again, the Quincy Police Department and Quincy Housing Authority, Sorgi and Jim Lyden, who both got together and decided that there was a real need and had decided to step up to meet this need. So I want to thank them for, on behalf of myself and the, and members of the community, so thank you. Yes, Council Finn.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt that, but the matter related to scheduling is, I think, within the Public Works Committee is 2016-69, which is a resolve seeking update on the status of the city's corrected FEMA maps, as Council La Force has said in initial resolve. Can we schedule that, is the city in any position to schedule that, and would we want to put that into the agenda? Through you, Mr. Walker.
Madam President, certainly at the council's discretion, depending on how far we along, we are along with getting the final response from FEMA, I think that will dictate precisely what level of update we'll be able to give, but there has been some work done, and the team is more than happy to come into the council for that.
Council La Force, would you like that?
No, I was just going to say, I know they're in a waiting period, they're waiting for some information from FEMA, unless there's been an update since the other day.
Yeah, they have received the, the letter from FEMA, spell it out, what is expected of the city, and have spoken with Joe Che, a word in current in regards, very anxious, the clock is ticking on our end, as they said at the neighborhood association meeting tonight, FEMA is great about setting our deadlines of the city of Quincy, when it comes to returning mayors, if you recall, we're supposed to be receiving a letter we just received maybe a few weeks ago at this point, back in the fall, we're supposed to receive that before the election, they're just getting back to us, months later, six months after their own deadline, when they were responding to us. Our deadline is hard, I'm very anxious, you will get this, I'm quite concerned that because of their delay, that they never response to the timeline, that now we may have constituents who need to renew their flood insurance, knowing, we already have seen, as you know, they're going to come off the maps, and now these constituents who are going to need to pay in a second year, potentially pay a second year of funding, because we're not able to get this resolved in the matter, we're not just getting this information, so time is on the, essence, the faster we can get moving on this, to get information submitted, it's very confusing, it's very technical, so the faster we can get the understanding to the public, I think, is in the best interest of our community.
Well, I'm at your discretion in terms of where you want to schedule it, or?
ASAP, I would say, the next, the next meeting. I mean, just to come forward and say, here's the information we received from FEMA, here's what the expectations are, spell it out. We understand that we're being asked for additional information, and I expect when the administration comes forward to give some presentation with all the answers. I have asked, again, the updated information, let's update the GIS, give people the opportunity. We've clearly reformed out of the online GIS system since the last round of FEMA maps, so now people need to understand how to navigate that as well. So I think that's the goal, and I'll give it to the council.
So, we'll bring it up at the agenda meeting for April 4th. April 4th, we'll get it on the agenda for April 4th, don't be tardy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Finn. At this time, will I take a motion to return?
Motion.
Motion to return, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye. Okay, yeah, here we go. Done. All right. There we go. It's all, it's.